If you don't want us for the day, then we won't come. We do have commitments, okay? No, we can make that one day, but it sounds like you don't want us. No, we're coming. Plan's a long one. Well, we didn't know it at first. You didn't tell us at first. Yeah, well, I figured that's what Saturday was gonna be. It's not five hours. Damn, it's not that bad of a trip. I know why. The worst of the drive is actually from on April. When you hit 81, it's nothing but a day. 81, 2, further will be worse. Have you got any plans that you're gonna do? You will see us. You will see us. It's just, we sat there. Okay, true. Well, he got on there, he looked, and everyone's seen that. He was, um, what they can see, what they can see. He tried to have a camera there, um, and see if that, uh, no, not by any chance. They all hooked up. And that's pretty much when he said, yeah. Yeah, that's pretty much what we're doing. You still want us, or do I just cancel that? I'm not. He doesn't. He had two bad experiences going down to you and coming back. They were a little dangerous. And I don't really want us to have to make that. But, he gave, he got clustered. He gave up after 10 minutes and leave it at that. No, it's not that he done homeboy. He doesn't want.
Hey Carl, how you doing?
Hey, everybody.
Hey. Hey Eric, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Well, I don't know. I guess I'm doing okay.
That's good. Kevin.
Victoria, is Teresa gonna be here?
Yeah, she's getting on just now.
Okay, good. I just noticed it's, you know, seven-ish.
She's looking for her Zoom invite right now.
Good. Maybe she wasn't invited.
Let's hope so. I'm here now, Chairman Bland.
Thank you. Just let me know when you guys are ready and we'll start. I don't know who's expected. I'm not sure if I can see everybody.
Okay, we're ready on our end, on the staff side.
See, there's some. Oh, I see. Eric and Carl and Eric, Carl, and who's that? Bill, Ray, Eric, Carl.
Do you see Alfreda?
Hmm, not yet.
I'm trying to make my.
See, Charity is not here, so who are we missing?
William Baker is not gonna be able to join us tonight.
So William is out and Charity's out, so then Alfreda's the only person we're looking. So we have four people here, right? We have a quorum.
Yes, we still have a quorum even without Alfreda.
Okay, well, let's, let's begin. This is the Town Episcopal Planning Board meeting for October the 4th, 2021, coming to order. We have an issue with the, we need to adopt the agenda, and I think there's an issue of another item. Teresa, do you want to speak to that, to the board?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We updated the agenda. It'll be item number five. It's the Chatham Park Affordable Housing Plan Additional Element. And it was sent to the board on Saturday, so you could start to review if you had time. But we just added it to the agenda and emailed that back out to the board members today.
Okay, thank you. Um, so is it agreeable with the board that then we have this agenda as Teresa just described? Any thoughts from the board? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as Teresa presented it?
Eric here, Ray, I'll move to adopt the new agenda.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray Carney. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as with the fifth item added today. Any more discussion? All in favor of, say aye please. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. That's four zero. The agenda is adopted. We come to the minutes. Everyone had time to look at the minutes. Any corrections or is there a motion to approve?
Can you hear me, Ray? Carl here.
Yes, yes, sir. Good job. Very well, thank you.
I, I do have some corrections, so I would like to make a motion that we adopt the minutes with these corrections. And let me, I've got a handful. Are you ready, Kelly? On page two, the paragraph titled Discussion by Board. The second line, that should say Ms. Schwedler answered that the land would allow for 2,200 homes, not people. The first line in the second paragraph, Charity's name is misspelled. That should be M-I-Z-E. On page three, paragraph three, paragraph starting with Carl Schaefer, line number four, should read adding an additional 2,000 homes. Paragraph four, starting with Carl Schaefer. I would like to have that sentence reworded as such. Carl Schaefer also raised a concern that much of the land was under an industrial irrigation zone and exhibited groundwater contamination in the past. All I know of is that it had been in the past. I don't know anything current. So add the word exhibited in front of groundwater and finish the sentence with "in the past." Further down that paragraph, line seven, the term wet weather basin should be replaced with wastewater lagoon. And on page four, item F, I would like that deleted because board member comment was not offered at the last meeting. So we should totally delete item F and change adjournment to item F. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes with those corrections.
Here, I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes according to Carl's corrections. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes approved as Carl has corrected. So moving on to G, new business, REZ 2021-06, conditional zoning. Let's see, who would like to speak to that?
That's me, Rayford.
Thank you, Victoria.
Kelly, you may have to allow me to share my screen. It's not letting me share my screen for the presentation. On it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Everybody see?
Yes.
All right. Evergreen Forest Incorporated is proposing to rezon parcel 7037 from RA2 residential agriculture, two acre minimum to M1 CZ light industrial conditional zoning. This 2.82 acre parcel is located at 1911 NC Highway 902. The existing structure that's currently sitting there was built in 1984 according to Chatham County tax records, which actually predates our zoning, our oldest zoning map, which was dated 1988. And it has this property down as RA2, which is its current zoning district, and it is surrounded by all the properties surrounding it, or also is on RA2. The Future Land Use Plan has this property designated for low density residential, which would not be consistent with an M1 zoning district. The applicant has proposed the following conditions. They've got six listed. One is limit uses to light manufacturing as defined in the UDO. And it has quite a lengthy definition. It should be in your packets if you want to read through it. But it essentially does not allow for outdoor storage exceeding 25% of the combined floor area of all buildings. It's got examples listed, including smaller pair of machines or electronic parts and equipment, computer design and development, apparel production, sign making, manufacturing of electric, electronic, or optical instruments or devices, manufacture of artificial lens, dentures, hearing aids, and surgical instruments, manufacture of cosmetics, manufacture of components, jewelry, clothing, trimming decorations, and similar items. It does not constitute a light industrial assembly use. The second proposed condition is, is existing vegetation and trees shown on the attached site plan are to remain. If you can see, they've got a little section designated on the southern portion of the property. And that's existing vegetation that's in place now, and it's going to, it's some of it, some of the existing vegetation that's there now will be removed, but the designated portion on the plan will remain. The structures are not limited to those existing structures shown on the plan. There will be no outdoor storage permitted. The additional parking, additional parking or paving will not be required for any additional indoor storage use that does not increase the number of vehicles used in the operation or the number of employees. And the last condition is no bicycle or pedestrian improvements are required. A public hearing was held on September 27th. There were no members of the public who's, who chose to speak at this rezoning hearing. Some commissioners had questions for staff and applicant to get clarification on the proposed conditions and the history of the site. Staff recommends that the board make one of the following motions on your screen to either approve or deny the request and adopt the consistency statement. And the representative for the applicant is here if you have any questions for them.
Victoria, you're still on slide number three from what we can see.
Oh, well, my screen is moving.
The one I'm looking at.
Let me see.
Yeah.
What do you see now?
That's the right one. That's the right one.
Okay, I don't know what lines.
We didn't see the conditions or the site plan, though.
Oh. Okay, well, there's the site plan. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. There's the conditions if anybody needs to see them. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board or any comments or suggestions?
Carl here, it's it's been like this for a long time. I knew, I know the former owner businessman, it was the hydraulic plant that was owned by Mr. Beaver and it has, this, this quite frankly is a more subtle, refined, if those are appropriate words, use than what it had been in the past. So with the conditions, you know, it would be a shame if the property wasn't used to its full advantage with all the buildings that are already in place. So, so I support it. I support the rezoning, the conditional rezoning, but I think we still would need to say state that it is not consistent with our land use plan. That's, that's, that's where I'll, I'll hang my hat tonight.
Carl, was that a motion or do you just commenting at this point?
I'll just make it a comment at this point. We'll see what the others have to say.
Excellent. Well, I certainly agree with Carl as far as the, the use goes and the and most of us that drive down there have just seen the place for many years. I have no problem with it. I'd like to hear what, will anyone else have some comments? There's just two more of us.
I have a question for Carl.
Yeah, right.
This was a commercial site once upon a time. Is that a correct statement?
No, it was, I guess it would be light manufacturing. It was hydraulic, hydraulic repair. So they'd bring in, you know, tractors, heavy equipment and fix hydraulic lines. So it was both internal and external, but it wasn't commercial as in clients or customers showing up at the property. It was totally, you know, I guess it would be a light in, you know, well, about light and to be industrial or manufacturing type of use. What they're doing now is computer, something to do with computer chips and parts assembly. And it's all, it's, it's really high tech and it's all internal, very strict climate controlled stuff. So the potential for, for noise, et cetera, is, is really limited, you know, the only course, when you drive down that road and see it, the only thing is it looks out of place with respect to the zoning. But as Victoria said, it predates any, any, any zoning we had stretching out there. And the, and the owner did a lot of improvements on the property over the past two to three years with some fencing and things like that.
But the property does have a prior history of some sort of commercial type or industrial type work, light industrial or?
Yeah, I'd say industrial manufacturing as opposed, as opposed to commercial. Yeah, maybe commercials proper too, but yeah, like I say, it was, it was hydraulic equipment. You know, putting new hoses fittings on, on heavy machinery, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Eric? You got any comments?
Oh, I'm muted there. I beg your pardon. I agree with Carl. I think that this is a step forward on this property and while it is inconsistent with the town's land use plans, it, it would be something that I would also support.
My understanding is if we approve this tonight with this re-conditional zoning, does that alter the land use plan?
Yes.
So that's so, so by by doing this and we change the land use plan. And it appears that all of us have spoken, I think, I understand favorably. Carl, would you like to phrase your motion the way to make sure it says you liked it?
Victoria, do you mind taking it to the last screen?
Oh, you did. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay, I don't know why my screen is not working at top speed right now.
Let me get a little more clarification on what you and Victoria just talked about, Ray. Victoria, if, if this by default changes the land use plan, will it show? If, if we don't, if we don't change any other thing out there and keep it as RA two, would it show this isolated parcel as, as, as the M I C Z?
It, it won't show the, the zoning district, but we would, it would change to a land use category that would match up, which would be, I think it's just titled industrial is the category that I looked at in our land use plan. Yeah, industrial is the one that would suit this zoning district the best.
Okay. It, it doesn't necessarily make it a target for changing the land use categories in that neighborhood in the future, does it?
I wouldn't think so because the other, the other parcels around it would still be they're all low density residential, so.
Okay, okay, got it.
It wouldn't change any of parcels around it.
Okay, yes. So, so Ray, the answer is finally yes. I will move that we state in our consistency statement that this proposed rezoning is not consistent with the town land use plan, which is item one on the consistency statement. And that we state that the proposed rezoning while being not consistent with land use plan. Wait a minute.
If you want to, Carl, you can just read number one because I believe in the consistency statement for approval that we put in there. It, it designates that the actual rezoning, even if you approve it, it's inconsistent with the, with the land use plan. So you can just, yeah, you can just read motion number one if y'all want to approve it, approve the rezoning.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. So that we're, that we're not consistent, item one on the consistency page, that we're not consistent with the land use plan and that we make a recommendation to approve the conditional rezoning request from RA two to M one dash C Z light industrial conditional on the two point eight two parko parcel seven oh three seven at nineteen eleven N C Highway nine oh two.
Thank you, Carl. Is there a second?
Eric, I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. It's been moved and seconded. It's inconsistent and we approved the rezoning according to what Carl read in the motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
I, all of those opposed? Hearing none, the chair declares that the ayes have it, four two zero, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we move here to item two on the old, new business. And who is going to present this issue?
This is Teresa. I'll present and I'm trying to get on the other screen. It's not giving me the usual options. Okay, can you? Can you see my full screen? Okay. Okay, what about now? Is that the full screen? Okay, great. All right. This request is for a special use permit. Jamie Schwedler is requesting for a plane development, including a maximum of two thousand two hundred and twenty-three units, which will be one family detached residences and town home residences and the associated accessory uses and amenities such as clubhouses. This will be located on three parcels, the total being approximately seven hundred and forty acres and it's located on Sanford Road fifteen five oh one South and Moncur Pittsburgh Road. You can see the town limit lines are pink, so they're abutting that. And the current land use is undeveloped, formerly the Webster poultry pond site. The property is actually located in now the R fifteen. We need to update our zoning map layers because this was just approved by the Board of Commissioners, September twenty-seventh. So it is zone R fifteen and that requires paint development to obtain a special use permit. And here I was going to show you the site plan. But it, it's so big that it slows the PowerPoint. So I was just going to try and bring that in the, over in the PDF. That's in the way. Okay. So the applicant has submitted this site plan, which is including your board packets. Oh, you cannot see it? Oh. Is it on the screen? No?
It's just blank, Teresa.
Okay, let's see. Now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So per the zoning ordinance, section five point three point three seven in the R fifteen zoning district, the maximum number of dwelling units shall not exceed eight units per gross acre. The applicant is proposing three units per acre with a maximum of, maximum of two thousand two hundred and twenty-three units. The applicant is specifying this project to be age restricted and the submitted narrative, which is included in your packets, specifies that at least eighty percent of all occupied units shall have residents at least of one person aged fifty-five or older. The zoning ordinance also requires an overall design that encourages cluster and compact development that is interrelated and linked by sidewalks and or pedestrian paths. The applicant is proposing sidewalks on both sides of the internal streets and the updated site plan illustrates pedestrian facilities shown by the red line on the map along fifteen five oh one in Moncur Pittsburgh Road. The zoning ordinance requires a community building or clubhouse, which there will be clubhouses in both the north section and the south section in these purple areas that are labeled amenity centers. Landscaping and screening on the peripheral boundary is also required and the applicant is proposing a varied twenty-five to fifty foot wide perimeter buffer as shown on a site plan. Foundation landscaping is required, which that is included in the narrative required for buildings that are not single family. So it is shown in the narrative to be provided for the amenity centers. And proposed setbacks and maximum heights is required. And there is a setback table that's in the PowerPoint. So since it's not letting me share both the PowerPoint and the site plan, I'll get to that in a second when I'm done with showing you the site plan. So five percent of the gross land area shall be reserved for open space. The applicant is meeting this requirement, which they are including fifteen percent open space. The zoning ordinance requires play areas, though, though it's only required, the way that it's worded in zoning ordinance is if it has more than five units on a lot. So the applicant is not going to have that many units on a lot. So they would not have to meet that play area requirement. Um, the zoning ordinance also requires that the site plan include certain details such as topography and there are some elevation lines. Location and approximate size of all existing and proposed structures, which they don't, they do not show that. Traffic circulation, so they show that on the more main roads in the site, not the smaller internal streets and or minor residential streets. Parking loading areas and expected stages of development. So the applicant has submitted in your packets a form, I think it's called code variations form, explaining the, the reasonings why they're asking to not have to meet that standard, which the zoning ordinance does allow the board to approve variations to, to the application. So their letter states allowing greater site design detail to, will be included later in the development process. Will provide flexibility and help facilitate the codes intent to promote innovative land planning, design and layout, allowing greater freedom and selecting the means to provide access, light, open space and design amenities. Okay, so I'm going to try and bring you back to the PowerPoint now. Close you. This would be the table that I was referring to. Let me make it full size. Can you see my full size screen? Okay, thank you. So these are the proposed setbacks that the applicant is requesting. Eighteen foot front yard, fifteen foot rear side, mostly five feet, some three feet. Maximum building height of thirty-five feet. Minimum lot width varies, minimum lot area varies as well. So you can see the single family detached compared down to the town home type development. Per the zoning ordinance, the Board of Commissioners may deny the special use permit if it is concluded based upon the information submitted at the evidentiary public hearing that if completed as proposed, the development more probably than not will materially endanger the public health or safety, will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or will not be in harmony with the area in which it is located or will not be in general conformity with the land development plan or other plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The applicant also speaks to similar findings in their attached statement of justification, which is included in your packets. So in regards to conformity with town plans, this, because the rezoning was approved, the land use plan map is actually designated the low density residential, which is that moss green looking color in the middle there. So the entire property is now low density residential. So the proposed single family pud playing development would be consistent with this land use category. Townsend's going to have connection points on 15501 Moncur Pittsboro Road, and also the future Chatham Parkway. The comprehensive transportation plan identifies Chatham Parkway South as a proposed four-lane boulevard facility. And this is an approved SIP project, R5963, which identifies this route as two lanes. This is illustrated on the site plan, so the proposed conceptual layout is consistent with the CTP. DOT is also designated the corridor as a two-lane road, and it's scheduled to begin in fiscal year 2024 and construction in fiscal year 2027. I think at the end of 2026, the year, calendar year of 2026, there that's when the construction will begin. DOT and the town has met with the applicant to start the discussion of a TIA. DOT would require a TIA, and reading the subdivision ordinance, there is some language on providing some sort of vehicle type illustration or showing, showing that they're meeting proposed vehicles. Expected amount of vehicles trips per day, so that can be a requirement by the board when it comes to the preliminary process. Currently, though, like through the special use permit process, a TIA would not be required from the town. From what we understand, DOT would require a TIA, though. It does not have to be approved for this planning development to be approved, though. The bike-in pedestrian plan shows proposed bike facilities on 15501 and Moncur Pittsboro Road, which the site plan does show that. So they are consistent with the bike and pit plan. Parks and Recreation Plan does show a greenway trail going through the site, and though their site plan does not match it exactly, they are showing a greenway, greenway trail system going through the site. So there was an evidentiary hearing that was held on August the 9th and continued to September 13th. Board and staff comments included requesting to add sidewalk along 15501 and Moncur Pittsboro Road, adding a 25 perimeter, 25-foot perimeter setback, adding language in section 2E of the narrative, clarifying the section, requesting that the multi-use trail be extended on Townsend South to serve Castle 24. There was a request for street tree spacing, and the updated narrative includes 50, 50-foot separation on center. There is a request to add additional stormwater commitments. The application shows that there will, they will treat the 1, 2, 5, and 10-year 24-hour storm levels in an increase, to increase the setbacks to 35 feet on 15501 and Moncur Pittsboro Road. So the applicant has updated the plans per these comments, and there's also a letter in your packets that speak to each of these items. So let me see the next. Speaking on the evidentiary hearing, with the special use permit being a quasi-judicial type item at the evidentiary hearing, that's when all of the evidence is presented for the board to use to consider approving or denying this request to see if they meet the findings of fact. So everybody that speaks has to be sworn in, and it's a much more complicated and specific type of hearing than a regular public hearing. It's been practiced, the common practice in North Carolina, that planning boards give recommendations on special use permits, so Pittsboro is still following in line with that. But on the statutes were updated, the 160D update specifically says that to, that planning boards can provide a preliminary forum for review of quasi-judicial decisions, provided that no part of the forum or recommendation may be used as a basis for the deciding board. So that being said, on this, just to let the board know that this is a statute, but our ordinance still requires the planning board to review and give recommendations on special use permits. It is on our parking lot list to update the UDO, and hopefully we'll have that before the board in December to possibly change this process to not include the planning board in recommendations, mainly just for legal reasons. Since special use permits are quasi-judicial, any sort of error that could possibly be made would be grounds for it being, the decision being overturned in court, so just wanted to bring that to the board's attention in regards to tonight's item. The Board of Commissioners can approve additional conditions of approval, and the applicant has submitted a couple of those. In addition to the standards, they are also adding a 30-foot streetscape buffer to Chatham Parkway, and as I stated before, they're also restricting the, the use to be age restricted, so at least 80% of all occupied units shall have at least one resident that is 55 years or older. The Board of Commissioners may also allow variation, so I went over what the applicant is requesting for those variations. So after review and discussion, staff recommends the planning board to make the following motion to recommend approval or denial. So please let me know if you have any questions, and applicants are here as well in case you have any questions for them also.
Thank you, Teresa. So this is, the hearing tonight is not a quasi-judicial hearing. However, the matter is a quasi-judicial matter, just that that's not what we're doing tonight. Is that correct? I know we have a couple of lawyers here. I would it's sensible to hear from one or the other or both in light of this quasi-judicial proceeding, even though this is not a part of that. I hope I'm speaking correctly about that, maybe one of those attorneys could speak up here at this point.
Would you like to hear, would you like to hear from the applicant at this time?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Messick, if you, if you'd like to add anything before I start, you're welcome to.
No, I was just going to say, Mr. Bryan, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, but this is not a hearing. This is a matter on your agenda for your review and recommendation based upon the existing, I mean, there's any ordinance of the town, and that's about it. I mean, you're not supposed to consider, you know, new matter that was not produced at the evidentiary hearings that were held on two different occasions before the town board.
Well, that, then that's helping a lot, so that we're, we're to base our decisions based on, perhaps you could say, what are the issues upon which we base our decision then?
Well, just what Ms. Thompson reported to you, the issues that the town board will have to decide will be based upon the evidence that was presented at the evidentiary hearing, whether there's any reason to think that those findings that they've got to make could not be made. And I don't know whether you all are privy to the comments or the evidence that was presented at the evidentiary hearing or not, but that, that's what they will consider, and presumably you would too.
Well, we actually have a presentation that summarizes that, so at the appropriate time, I can run through that and try to make it as concise as I can. Would that be preferable, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please do.
Okay, and can I share my screen? Can you all see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mr. Chair, I'm Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe at 31 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. This special use permit is step two of the development approvals we're seeking for this project, and as we just learned, the zoning case was approved by the Board of Commissioners on September 27th, and tonight you'll be considering the special use permit, which follows a different procedure from your legislative decisions such as zoning, so it follows that different process because state law says that specific procedures and rules govern how those commissioners make their decision, and that the evidentiary hearing, the evidence before the evidentiary hearings, both in August 9th and continued to September 13th, are what the Board of Commissioners will be called upon, so to make their decision. So I will outline and summarize what that evidence of record is. I'll do it using the PowerPoint that we used in the September 13th hearing because it not only went into the new issues that we came back to cover and on the 13th, but it went through the old issues. But bear with me a little bit because I'll be jumping around back and forth a little bit. But at the end of the evidence, what we'll call on the Board of Commissioners to decide is that if they find all of the evidence was based on competent material and substantial evidence of record, that the board should, should approve the special use permit, and so I think your task tonight is to do much of the same, evaluate the evidence that's of record in front of you. If you also find it's competent material and substantial, then your recommendation should be for the Board of Commissioners to approve the case. So we'll begin with a special use permit, a site plan that's on your screen here, which allows us to go into much more detail than we could in the general zoning case. And it also goes into a great deal of detail because there's substantial amount of factors that the Board of Commissioners will be called upon to decide this case. Now, they include the special use permit review factors on the screen, the PUD design features shown on the screen, and then finally the PUD design standards. So in our August 9th hearing, we pulled all of these together into one chart and organized them by topic so that we dealt with the UDO and comprehensive plan compliance, the PUD design quality and features, safety, welfare, utilities and infrastructure, and finally harmony and neighborhood impact. Each of those related to the factors and each of the witnesses in their sworn testimony testified as to which factor they were addressing, kind of grouped by topic here. And first, we heard from the Vice President of Entitlements and Development at Pulte for 15 years, who is directly involved in the construction of four age-restricted active adult residential communities in North Carolina, about the need for this age-restricted development and how that was consistent with comprehensive plan, which has two policies related to how Pittsboro has become a magnet for retirees and how this type of housing is tending to lift the, the spending and investment for throughout the county, and that that variety of housing stock is needed to ensure vitality of the community. Mr. Raleigh testified as to his experience designing other projects and how they look at the factors with respect to a growing need for housing and that this type of age-restricted housing or active adult housing was shown to be needed in Pittsboro based on their research. He also went on to testify, oh, excuse me, about community features and how those relate to the type of quality design that's called for in PUDs such as this, and how those features relate to adding to the amenity quality and making it an amenity-rich area. He went through some of the experience he had at Del Webb Communities, both in Wake County and Chatham County, and based on those standards, he envisions a similar level of quality and design that will be committed here, and that the commitments in the PUD reflect some of those things, such as clubhouse and amenity centers that Ms. Thompson outlined earlier. We also had some testimony about the level of quality of the architecture and, and that summary was given to the board. Mr. Raleigh also testified about his experience with age-restricted communities and based on that, that restriction in the PUD, that at least 80% of all occupied units will have one person of 55 years or older. It has a significant impact on drawing down the impact on the surrounding area, and he expressed that in several different ways. First, there won't be any school-aged children, so they won't need to be considered in any school capacity projections or impacts for the town. Second, age-restricted communities typically have a lot of retirees that don't have a daily commute to work, and so they're taking what would otherwise seem to be peak hour trips kind of off the road, and instead they have adequate amounts of time to spend on investing in the economy, volunteering in different clubs and the like. He also testified that based on his experience, they, they are more experienced homeowners who tend to to be good neighbors, good citizens, and that they are active in their communities. Next, we heard from Mr. Nick Antrilli, a civil engineer with 14 years' experience at Withers RAVNL, as to the site plan layout and its compliance with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan policies. And there were significant amount of factors that Mr. Antrilli testified to, and I won't go into detail, but I'll summarize them here, and that at the time this came forward, there were several different comprehensive plans that, excuse me, future land use designations that applied to the site. Ms. Thompson just clarified that that has now been updated to all low-density residential neighborhood, so it's, it was even, even more consistent today, and that's something that the, the board can kind of take into, into account. But it was significant for us as well because we are restricting ourselves to three units per acre, committing to a significant amount of open space. Of course, there's many repairing buffers throughout the property, and so the combination of these things combined really helped to add to the low-density residential designation that's now across the property and the prior as well. Mr. Antrilli also testified as to there's 139 acres of designated open space, planted streetscapes, and all of these are consistent with that type of low-density residential character. This shows the, the plan as of August 9th, which showed how there was clustering of residential units, 18% common space as opposed to 5% minimum, foundation landscaping for all buildings, the amenity centers, and a clubhouse greenway with, with trails to promote walkability. There were some adjustments made, and I'll show you that updated plan in just a second, but based on this evidence, Mr. Antrilli gave his expert opinion that the plan as designed complied with all applicable requirements and design elements of the zoning ordinance and was consistent with those factors. He went on to explain some of the elements that kind of bleed into safety and welfare, including some of the streetscape planting schemes, our typical roadway section that was offered as part of the plan, and then these five different type of lots that were envisioned to be part of the site. And so these are all commitments or illustrations from commitments in the special use permit PUD package, and Mr. Antrilli testified as to how the setbacks, the heights, and all of the different types of lot configurations were offered, and how the overall project was consistent again with each of those layout determinations. Excuse me. Didn't need to undo that. Next, we heard from Mr. Brian Blake with over 20 years of experience in civil engineering with McCrimmon-Creade, who addressed the adequacy of water and sewer facilities and plans for extension of utilities, and was tendered as an expert in civil and utilities engineering. I might not have mentioned that both Mr. Raleigh and Mr. Antrilli were also accepted as experts in their field. And based on Mr. Brian Blake's examination of the water and sewer layouts, they performed the study that you see here on your screen, and it's anticipated that the towns in north will be the first half of the project is shown on this side of Chatham Parkway, and that this conceptual analysis was kind of the appropriate level of detail for this project. Based on that testimony, he testified that the existing town water lines were shown in turquoise, and there's several existing water lines to the north of the site along Sanford Road and Moncur Pittsboro Road. He reviewed the town's water system and infrastructure, which indicated that there were sufficient water system capacity and elevated storage. and elevated storage and that the extensions of the water mains that are planned were shown in light blue here on the screen. So flipping back and forth here. He also explained that the town is in negotiations with the city of Sanford to procure additional water and that it's anticipated that the flow from towns in north will produce a sewer flow that is adequate and that the related entities associated with the owners of the property have procured sewer capacity and during subdivision and plating are prepared to allocate portions of this to each phase based on projected sewer flows. So based on this testimony and his expert opinion, Mr. Blake was confident that the utilities and infrastructure associated with the plan were sufficient to meet each of those requirements I showed you on the screen with respect to utilities and infrastructure, both for the PUD requirements and the quasi judicial requirements. He testified that the project provides efficient design and layout of the utilities, will have adequate access to water and sewer service, and will not endanger the public health or safety. Next, we heard from Mr. Kevin Dean. Sorry, I'm trying to advance here. A transportation engineer with 10 years of experience with Kimberly Horn, who testified to traffic layout of streets and how these relate to safety and welfare. Mr. Dean was also accepted as an expert in his field of traffic engineering. And he explained how he conducted a trip generation analysis for the project, which based on his experience was appropriate due to this level of approval and that further TIA's and studies will be conducted as the case moves forward. But based on that trip generation analysis, when Philly built out, the project was expected to generate approximately half the total daily trips that would otherwise be generated by a typical, so not age-restricted, community of this size. And that would mean that at peak hour, we'd only have about 27% of the AM peak hour trips that would otherwise be generated by a non-age-restricted development. And at PM peak hour, likewise, only about 27% of the PM peak hour-generated trips, which is significant because due to that age restriction and the tendency of folks to have these particular traffic patterns, the trip generation analysis shows that the impact on the surrounding areas will be significantly reduced as compared to a non-age-restricted property. In addition, we've talked about Chatham Parkway that will be extended kind of bisecting the property. It's expected to have two lanes and 114 feet of right-of-way, which will provide additional circulation and east-west connection. Ms. Thompson did a great job explaining the timeframe for that, so I won't belabor the point, but will be available to answer any questions on that. And would just summarize Mr. Dean's testimony that based on his expert experience, the trip generation study, the proposed internal streets, and the extension of Chatham Parkway and timing, that the traffic improvements that will be required by NC DOT will create safe and adequate access for the residents of Townsend and the existing residents of Pittsboro and ensure that the project would not overwhelm traffic infrastructure in the area. And for these reasons, he offered an expert opinion that the project will not endanger the public health or safety. Finally, we heard from Mr. Rich Kirkland, a certified MIA appraiser and licensed in North Carolina, who testified as to harmony with the surrounding area and impacts of property values and was offered and accepted as an expert in the field of property valuation. And Mr. Kirkland explained that he developed an impact report where he reviewed the SUP site plan features for compatibility with the adjacent area. And he also reviewed the prices of homes sold in and around Carolina Preserve by Del Webb. He chose this community because it's a similar model that's proposed here. It also has sites in Chatham County. And he was able to compare the prices of sales adjacent to Carolina Preserve and then adjacent to other non-age-restricted, non-Polte developments. And from his expert opinion, he was able to determine that looking at the impacts on adjoining property value, these types of highly amenitized, age-restricted properties tend to not have a negative impact on the pricing or the home values of adjoining property and that they are compatible with the surrounding area due to the increased buffers, the limitations on heights, setbacks, and the like that I think that we covered earlier in the testimony. So based on Mr. Kirkland's opinion, the project would not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties and be in harmony with the surrounding area. After that meeting, the board continued the hearing to September 13th to address seven issues raised at the initial hearing. I'm showing you there what those issues were on the screen, and I'll walk through what each of those changes are so that the progression makes sense. So there was a discussion about whether and how sidewalks would be installed along the adjacent areas to Moncur Pittsboro Road and 15501. And the applicant agreed to update the PUD to either install those sidewalks or pay a fee in lieu. That was later updated to a calculation based on the policy that was then in effect. And that was decided at the 13th hearing before the hearing was closed. The second change was clarifying language in the minimum 10-foot setback from the typical roadway section that was agreed to in the hearing and summarized here. There was a request for a street tree spacing standard that was included here, and Ms. Thompson summarized that there 50 feet on center. There was a request to include additional stormwater conditions, and so that Ms. Thompson clarified those as well. And we just wanted to point out this addition in the PUD that engineering stormwater control shall be designed to constructed and control the runoff generated by built-upon area by 1.5 inches of rainfall. That was an addition from the 9th to the 13th. There was number five, extend multi-use trail on the amenity area, which we accommodated, and that's a snapshot from the updated site plan. There was a request for a minimum 35-foot building setback from 15501 and Moncur Pittsboro Road, and that was clarified and shown in the special use permit area plan as well. And then finally, the request for a minimum 25-foot wide perimeter buffer that was made throughout and is shown here on the screen. And so that resulted in the overall updated special use permit site plan. Just kind of summarizing these changes, which are shown in red here on the screen. We summarized for the board and would like to summarize for you that each of these topics were met with competent materials, substantial evidence from each of the special use permit factors and the PUD factors and design elements, that those factors were supported at the August 9th. We met our burden of proof at that hearing and then further clarified it and supported it with the additional factors that I explained here tonight. And as a result, it is our belief under North Carolina law that special use permits should issue. I would like to just underscore that each witness was sworn in as an expert in their field. There were no contrary witnesses from the August 9th meeting on any of these substantive points and no expert witnesses offered in opposition at all. There was a witness that raised a concern with a boundary dispute, but the town attorney ruled her comments not relevant to the special use permit issue, and that leaves us as a matter of law with the only competent material and substantial evidence of record is that offered by the applicant with witnesses who were sworn as experts in each topic. And under North Carolina law, we believe that entitles the applicant to a finding that each of these findings have been met with competent material and substantial evidence. And if you agree, we'd request that the board send this forward with a recommendation for approval before the Board of Commissioners. We have our witnesses from the prior hearing that's now closed available to answer any questions related to the materials and the evidence of record. It's my understanding all of that evidence was forwarded to you all either in your agenda packet or via email, and we're happy to go into detail on each point or any point. But just wanted to make those persons available should any clarifications need to be made.
Thank you, Jamie. Further questions, comments, or queries from the board for the applicant, there's there's some other people here too that maybe may be interested in responding. I know the board had some questions last time this came up. Think about the previous use of the property.
Carl here, Ray. Questions for Teresa. Teresa, what's the impervious area maximum limit for this area, for this parcel or this project?
So this one should be if it's let me double check. It's been a little while since I did my initial review of that the watershed standards. Because we have two different watershed districts in Pittsboro. And this one might be on the border of watershed four and I know it's in Jordan Lake, but let me just double check watershed four. So it is watershed four. So it depends on if it's considered low density or high density. If it's low density, then that would be 24% up to. If it's high density, it'd be up to 70%.
Okay, thanks. And is what you showed, and I think Jamie showed a parallel slide. Is that, are we actually passing approval on the site plan at this point or just the SUP?
So the special use permit refers to a site plan that's different than the typical types of site plans that you have seen in the past. Like, for example, when we presented to you the proposed town hall building or site plan, that was very specific, very detailed. So the special use permit plan, site plan, it is required to show the type of details that is in the PUD section of the ordinance. And that's the bullets that I went through in the presentation. So that would include topography, sided contour intervals no greater than five feet, shows all structures, location and approximate size of all existing and proposed structures within the site, and all buildings and structures within 500 feet. All easement or right-of-way, public or private adjoining or intersecting such property, circulation, automobile, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation within to and from the site, including proposed points of access and egress and proposed pattern of internal automobile and pedestrian circulation. Number four, parking and loading, location and extent of parking and loading areas, and proposed lighting facilities for parking and loading areas. And number five, timing, proposed schedule of development, including stages likely to be followed. So those are the variations that the applicant is requesting to not have to meet at this time and keep it more on the conceptual level. So that being said, at the preliminary plat step, which they would have to come back for preliminary plats for the two different phases that they have, the north and the south, that's when we would look at their specific details of all minor residential streets. The site plan that they're showing gives you an idea of what that would be. They do show the main roads. We don't know exactly how it's going to be laid out, though. So you know, that is the board's discretion on allowing those waivers or not in this application. So did I answer your question?
Pretty much. The specific thing that was in my mind was road width. You know, we got caught out at Powell Place with parking on both sides of the street and no room for emergency vehicles. And so we forced Powell Place to prohibit parking on one street side. So road width was where I was leaning. You know, we don't have enough to look at. And I think you answered the question that we will see that again down the road and the fire marshal and all those people will look at it.
So the proposed roads that they show, that they do show on there, there are some two typical road sections that are included in the packet. So I can show that to you on the screen.
I saw one that's 12 feet. Oh, there you go. There it is. And some that are 11.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
So that's what their proposed street typicals are. So, yeah, I was looking at the subdivision ordinance and the language that is it doesn't specify requiring a traffic impact assessment. It it says.
Well, while you're looking there, Teresa, my, you know, my concern is that I'm not sure if these are roads that prohibit parking, you know, at Powell Place. Again, it, you know, it was not a good scene. And if these, you know, roads that we're looking at right now, 12 feet, if people are parking on one side of it, then that nine-foot fire truck is not going to fit. And the chief told me he pushed the car out of the way if he got in that situation. So, you know, I think we need to have a bit more detail on some of these if if we're, if tonight we're giving a green light on a lot of these details.
We have Mr. Nick Antrilli on the line that can answer that. And Teresa, I think I can share my screen if it's easier for you, but the road, it might be helpful for Nick to explain where those roadway sections are.
Yeah, sure. So as as Teresa had showed, you are there you go. Perfect. We have a typical road section A, which is what you see in white that goes from the northwest corner of the site all the way through out to Moncur Pittsboro Road that is identified as roadway section A, which has a two 12-foot travel lanes as well as a median. And then we have the other roads that you see in white identified as roadway section B, which is essentially two 11-foot lanes totaling 27 foot back-to-back, which is very typical for internal residential circulation.
Is it safe to say then, Nick, that these are thoroughfares and parking will be prohibited?
I think it's safe to say that, you know, roadway section A is of that nature. And I think there's no lots fronting roadway section A. We're not encouraging parking on roadway section A. We're not providing bump-out parking at this time for roadway section A. So roadway section A isn't intended to be of that thoroughfare nature. Roadway section B, though, is intended to get about the development and will have lots fronting on it. So that type of development is more allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, while you're on, could you also answer the question about the percent impervious, please? Was he frozen? It is the 70%.
And just to speak to the width of Powell Place, the area that was widened recently for to accommodate, or not to just accommodate, but the issue that you were speaking of with the width of Powell Place, not being wide enough to accommodate two lanes of traffic and on-street parking, it was widened to 27 feet. Is that correct? Oh, it was originally 27 feet? And it was widened to 33 feet? That area that's adjacent to the sanctuary, which the 33 feet seems more than adequate to me to driving through there when you have a car parked and the two lanes, you can, you know, pass another car coming towards you pretty easily. The 27-foot, that's typically where you have, when a car is parked on the side of the road, especially a larger car, people stop and they wait for the other lane, the drivers in the other lane to pass them before they'll go around the car. The drivers in the other lane to pass them before they'll go around the car, because it's twenty-seven feet, just seems like it's not. Wide enough for that type of on-street parking, at least in, that's our experience in Powell Place.
Right, okay. Thanks, Teresa. The only other thing I have right now, I'm not sure who it's for. I'm rather confused by all the math I'm doing in my head. So we have seven hundred and forty acres. On the slide from Ms. Schwedler. We saw a hundred and forty acres open. Which leaves six hundred. We also saw a statement, maximum density of three units per acre. Which comes to eighteen hundred, not twenty-two, twenty-three. My confusion is furthered. By looking at table five point four dash one on page two. With lots. Of three, eighteen hundred to seven thousand square feet. Whereas in the presentation. It was stated that there was a maximum of three units per acre. So I need some resolution to that. It's, I, I, they, they can't all be correct.
Sure. The, the three units per acre is taken from the overall density, and it may, it might be best. Nick, are you back on? He lost power, so I'm not sure he's. Are you back on? Okay, good.
Sorry.
Could, could you hear the question?
I did not. I just, just joined.
Okay. Planning board member Shaffer is asking you to reconcile the three units. Per acre density with the lot sizes. And I believe was calculating the density based on subtracting the gross acreage. Subtracting the open space from the gross acreage. Can you clarify for him how density is, was calculated here and how that relates to the minimum lot sizes?
Yeah, sure. So, so density on, on projects is based on the. Entire project acreage, gross acreage. It's not. Based on a particular component. Of acreage within the property. So in this case, it would be. Two thousand two hundred and twenty-three units divided by the total acreage of seven hundred and forty point eight four. Acres.
Okay, that makes sense. So the term maximum three per acre. Is, is, is the error, I guess. That, that statement was made, there's a maximum of three units per acre. That's on average over seven hundred and forty acres.
Correct. That's how density is calculated.
Okay, so it's not, yeah, it's not, okay, I got it.
Any more questions, Carl, or?
No.
Okay. Is any more. Of forms of presentation from the applicant or anything else that you need to present?
No, I can take this down. I was just using it to illustrate the question.
Great, thank you. Any further comments, questions, or concerns from the board? That you'd like clarified? I'm not sure about the traffic questions that came up last week. Are there concerns about that? Or has that been resolved?
I think I raised that question, Ray, at the last meeting, and the, the expert's analysis satisfied me.
Now, are you saying, yeah, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding, but you said you're clear on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm clear on it. Thank you, Ray.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Hey, Ray, I have a question.
Certainly, sir.
This is Ray Carney, and it may not have as much to do with this particular project. But I think last week you were mentioning, we have a traffic problem that's going to occur in Pittsburgh. We need to look at our infrastructure. Maybe I'm wrong on that. But through research, I found out that the DOT only worries about state roads. They're not worrying about traffic getting off Small Street and onto sixty-four. Business. They're not worrying about traffic going down Chatham Street and getting out on fifteen five oh one. What, what is the town going to do to prevent this? I mean. Saturday morning, we tried to get out, we couldn't get out on, from Chatham Street to fifth, or, yeah, fifteen five oh one South. And it was backed up to Cornwallis Street, and that was the Saturday morning, or Friday morning, I'm sorry, about eight-thirty. So we're headed towards this development, and we have tons of traffic. So somewhere along the line, we have to have a study that takes, in effect. Our streets, the streets that belong to Pittsburgh. And how do we resolve that?
We have Kevin Dean on the line that can, can speak to that if you prefer.
Yeah, fine. It was more addressed. For the whole. You know, for the town of Pittsburgh, and I think we have maybe a few of the superintendents here, because it is a problem in town. And there's another development I know that's going to be starting on. Off from sixty-four East. Down by the Chatham Parkway. That's, it's in that area. If they need to go to a grocery store, they're going to come up fifteen five, or sixty-four business. It, it, it's just, we're going to have a nightmare traffic problem in the town of Pittsburgh, in my opinion. And I'd like to know what Pittsburgh itself is going to do to identify it, because my understandings are that the DOT. Takes an effect. On their highways when they do a study. So if you could answer that, just to clear my mind up, I'd appreciate it.
Is that question directed towards me, Mr. Carney?
Yeah, Teresa, or not Teresa. Is it Jamie? Ms. Schwedler?
Oh, you, you'd like us to address that?
If, if you could, I mean, I'm not directing it to cause any problems within your development, but I, I'd like to come up with some answers for myself, so I can understand this process, because there's more coming.
Sure. Kevin, do you want to kind of talk about the interplay between town review and DOT when we get to site plan and the, or preliminary plat in those further stages?
Yeah, I think, so for our project, we, we will be required to do traffic analyses along the way. Where that'll recognize the phased component of the development and how traffic and the roadway network changes. With a project of this build-out. And it's going to, the length of time that it's going to take to, to get the project built out, a lot will change in the interim, so our analysis will account for that. As we go through our analysis, I think Ms. Thompson or Mr. Kennedy could speak more about how the town works with DOT. And the regional planning organizations to look at required roadway widths and improvements. To accommodate long-term. Traffic patterns, and I think that would account for both town and DOT streets, but I would have to defer to them on that specific process.
Yeah, and, and my concern is the inner-town roads, not the state roads, because if you, if you can't get out on the road, which is happening now. And then we add more traffic from two, three, four, or five different developments that are in the process of coming. It, it's just going to put a lot of hardship on some people that live in town now. So.
Okay, so. To speak to the process right now, we don't have. Their final circulation plan. Um, I, I know the town staff, including the town engineers. We had a meeting with the applicants and DOT to start the discussions of a traffic impact assessment. Um, so DOT, they, they would be looking at. How is this development going to impact their DOT road? So. In order for this development to get driveway permits. Onto Moncrief Pittsburgh Road. Fifteen five one. Chatham Parkway, anything that's going to be a DOT road. They're going to require that TIA. Um. Internal circulation. That will also be reviewed by town staff, specifically the town engineers. Um. Our subdivision ordinance, from what I can tell, is, is limited on what that engineer, the discretion of the engineer and what he and she can require. There is some language that. The, it, it doesn't say who requires it, but there's language on page twenty-five. Which it just says. That it may be. Required to submit an economic impact assessment. To include the following. And then here it says increases in vehicular traffic, number of automobiles. But in general. And there's also what's required on the preliminary plat. It does include that they need to show the location width of all existing and proposed street right-of-ways and easements and other public ways. But. In terms of design and construction of the streets. At, at the time that this, you know, subdivision was in place, we did not have any additional. Specifications or, or road typicals. The subdivision ordinance pretty much just relies on. DOT. Standards. So. That would be. All that we would be able to look at, which is, it's towards the end of. The standards, but it would be, that's basically what, what we'd have to look at. So. Anything in regards to the traffic impact assessment that the engineer might say, oh, well. I think based on this, we think, I think that the street typicals should be this instead. I don't, I don't know if there's much wiggle room at the preliminary plat step, just because preliminary plats in general are not supposed to be. Discretionary decisions. If, if the applicant submits a preliminary plat and they meet the standard that's listed in the ordinance. Then it's just like any other type of administrative approval, like a zoning compliance certificate. It has to be approved. So that, I mean. That's. I don't know if that answers your question exactly. Each project is reviewed separately, and how does it impact? Our internal town streets, major roads. We, we do work with DOT, we do work with the applicant. But we can only go by what is allowed by the ordinance for specific types of approvals. And I don't know if Ken, or, excuse me, Chris. Or Paul would like to help weigh in on that.
Teresa, if I may, if I understand Mr. Carney's question correctly, good evening, everybody. It's Chris Kennedy. I think what I would offer to that is. When you look at a, a traffic impact analysis, TIA. What occurs with that is at the beginning of that, there's a scoping session between the town and the engineer who's reviewing that. During that scoping session, what they do is they define kind of the project area. And the area of concern beyond that, the, the, the subject property. So typically, you might go a quarter mile up and look at every intersection within that. Once you've. Had that scope, that's what falls into that development. I think, Mr. Carney, what you're speaking to are areas that aren't necessarily directly related to those developments. I.e. this one this evening. But looking at how something that's within a mile or so of downtown affects downtown streets. And the increase, not only in the population growth, but average daily trips that occur on those downtown streets. Ms. Schwedler talked about the economic impact and the benefit to downtown. So obviously, we want those trips to go downtown. The key is, when do they go downtown? And what is the quantity of those that do go downtown? And so I think to, to answer your question, I think it's incumbent upon the town at some point, likely outside of any development, we're not going to see a. Subdivision on the corner of Chatham Street and Sanford Road. So, you know, unless something's more proximal to that location, that intersection. It's probably going to go under the radar or out of the scope of any traffic impact analysis that, that we do, unless we intentionally do one for that area. So what we would do. With that is the town would, would need to study that independently of a development. That's incumbent upon us. That's us working with DOT. Teresa's involved with TarPO. She's chair of the RTCC of that board. Commissioner Fiocco's on the RTAC for TarPO. So we could look at our folks at the, at the planning organization for transportation projects. At some kind of special study for our downtown. When you look at those projects, everything's measured off delay. So you have roads graded basically A through F. Just like you would in school, A is the best. And, and F is the worst, and all those are based upon delay. So an A might be something that's fewer than ten seconds of delay. Where the, you, you don't need a stop sign, you don't need anything there, you can roll through. Or you may acquire a stop sign, but it's, you know, maybe one or two cars in front of you tops. I think as you spoke, spoke to, Mr. Carney, you go to East Chatham Street and you're turning south, you might be there for several minutes. As flow comes through the traffic circle. Now, we're all thankful the traffic circle is about o- back open. But that north-south flow and that left-hand movement i- is a tough one to make. And so in the future, as we continue to grow. I could see us doing a study right there and determining whether we might need some other type of. Mitigation factor. That could be a traffic light. It could be a yield sign, could be a stop sign. We might make a four-way stop there. Just to facilitate traffic through there and reduce the amount of delay we have. Obviously, on our local streets that we have in town, you know, they're small roads, they're narrow roads with limited ability to expand. You're not going down Small Street and doing what DOT would call a widening project to put a, a third lane for a turn lane in the middle of that. You're taking out houses. It defeats the purpose. So. On your primary roads, the ones that DOT looks at. You want to have a freer flow of traffic. Your conflicting roads, the ones that come into those DOT roads are typically town roads or maybe town roads. You expect a little bit of delay on those. Because you want to keep the main road free-flow. And so we expect some delay. But again, kind of maybe long story long. A- as we continue to grow, we want to be able to provide the proper mitigation. So. Instead of simply a stop sign for that left-hand or right-hand movement at Chatham. We might get a four-way stop, or maybe a traffic light down the road to help traffic facilitate and flow through town better. I hope that answers your question.
Well, that, that's what I was trying to achieve, because it seems like anytime we talk development, we talk traffic. And.
No doubt.
If, if we don't solve the traffic problems within the town, i- it's just going to get worse. So that's the reason I brought it up. I didn't want to bring it up so much. Because of this, but it was a topic that was discussed. On the zoning that we talked about last time, and Mr. Bland just brought that up. So I thought it would be a good time to try to get that in there. And maybe, you know, the commissioners that are visiting yourself, that are visiting, can take a look at this.
Yes, sir. I, I, I agree completely. I mean. Obviously, when Chatham Parkway goes through on the south side, that will facilitate, you know, kind of the passer-through traffic. In and around downtown to hopefully keep some of those streets free-flow. But again, we do want those trips to go downtown. So we intentionally want to force them into potentially some of those bottleneck situations. So again, it, it is my opinion that it's incumbent upon the town staff. To, to investigate that and, and conduct those studies needed to make sure that we don't just have a complete road failure. With, you know, minutes of delay with all the movements downtown. That, that doesn't help us either.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Ray, and thanks, Chris. Does any board member have anything unresolved? Any more questions or concerns or? Thoughts? Are we ready to vote on this issue? Is there a motion?
Ray, it's Eric. I'll move to approve the special use permit for planned unit development at thirteen seventy-seven Sanford Road, Pittsburgh. Identified as parcels ID six oh seven seven four eight nine seven two zero and seven four one three.
Alfred Austin, I'll second that.
Thank you, Eric, for the motion and, and for the second. Is there any more discussion now on these, on this motion? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor of Eric's motion with Frida's second, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
So do I hear that? It's the, there's four, four and one opposed. Is that correct? Then the motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
And Teresa, by the way, I just printed off that last copy of the agenda. I didn't have it when I started this. So I'm sorry for that. So we have the text amendment, number three.
Yes, sir.
Go, go ahead.
Okay. Um. Get you on full screen. Can you see my full screen, or is it the other? Thank you. All right. Painting staff is requesting text amendments to the Pittsburgh UDO. We've included adding the records of amendment chapter, reorganizing sections and chapters. Adding a new development incentives chapter, which is going to include the affordable housing and green buildings incentives sections. Updating the performance guarantees and adding new town home standards. Which are currently not in the UDO. So. Your, your packet includes. Bold font, that's black, bold font, that's blue, and then strike-through text. So if it's blue, that is based on. So if it's blue, that is based on additional changes staff has recommended that was presented during the public hearing. So going through. The items, oh, the first one is changing the title. Of single-family attached dwelling to townhouse standard, which that's the, the typical more common name that's used. So we, we just went ahead and changed it to townhouse and everyone understands what that means typically. And I don't know, two. We created specific use standards for townhomes. And the old zoning ordinance allowed townhomes only through special use permits. The new UDO allows them as permitted by right, which you can see all the Ps. That these are all the districts that they're allowed in currently as permitted by right. That means that anybody can submit their proposal to the town staff, the site plan. And if. If the site plan looks adequate, we can approve that at the staff level. Preliminary plots still require board approvals, as I explained with the last item. So long as you meet the standards of the UDO, though, it has to be approved. So even though the townhomes were changed to permitted by right. There were no standards added by the consultant group that drafted the UDO. And they also just, because of that. Townhomes would have to meet like the minimum lot size of that zoning district. So that's just, that would be way too large for an individual townhome. So we did some research, we looked at several jurisdictions, Raleigh, Durham, Cary, Higbee Arena. We, we reached out to the Home Builders Association of Durham, Orange and Chatham Counties. We also received feedback from Chatham Park representatives. So, and we also, there's two proposed townhome developments that's going to be coming up soon in Pittsburgh. One on Diane Street and one on Tumor Loop Road. So we reached out to those applicants with the proposed language. We just wanted to make sure that if there were any issues. That would arise with, with their proposals that we would do about that upfront. So based on their feedback, though, they didn't, they didn't see any. Any, any issues with meeting the proposed standards. So, and some of the changes that we've made were based on. Conversations that we had with the Home Builders Association as well and Chatham Park Representatives.
Thanks, Teresa. Any thoughts on the board, from the board, comments?
Carl here, I looked it all over. It all makes good sense to me.
Thank you. I agree. I, I certainly think just.
I'll just go through. They're, they're, at the hearing, it seemed like the main concerns were if we needed to have the guest parking. Knowing that that just creates more pavement and trying to look at alternatives to just having. A bunch of parking spaces. So that was part of the discussion. And. See. Oh, the other discussion was changing the percent for the types of. Improvements that have to be complete, changing it from forty to seventy-five percent if that was necessary. So staff explained that it would be preferable to change it to seventy-five percent. That just makes sure that more improvements are done in order for a development to get final plot approval. Worst-case scenario, developer goes bankrupt and the town has to ensure, you know, we would. Use the money from the performance guarantee to pay for it. So that just puts the town in a tough spot. Especially if there's still a lot that has to be done. So if, if you've already gone through everything, then I won't go through it in detail and. Just please let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Teresa. I'm assuming that everybody is think, is agreeable with this and I, I, I'm fine with it. If, if there are no more questions, we can have a motion perhaps.
I make a motion that we change the. The town has requested.
Freedom moves two seconds.
Eric will second.
Thank you, Eric. So it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Calling for votes, those in favor say aye. I, I heard ayes and no opposition. Is that correct? Is it five to zero? All in favor? So, okay, so it passes unanimously. The motion is approved. Thank you. We move to the similar thing, a text amendment for. Affordable housing incentives. Teresa, I said you. Or is it someone else?
Mr. Bland, I'm, I'm going to take care of this one for this evening.
Excellent.
So what we have for us tonight is ZTA twenty twenty-one zero five. This is the town of Pittsburgh's affordable housing incentive policies. Unless the board requires it or suggests it, I'm just going to kind of talk and I trust that you've got the materials in front of you that. It's for us to have an open dialogue, kind of go through the, the standards and parameters of this ordinance.
Sure.
One thing that, that I would note with this is, is simply that we want to be very clear that these are incentives and not mandatory requirements. It's been much discussed in the state of Carolina whether inclusionary zoning can be mandated. There are a few of our counterparts, three to be exact, that have mandatory policies in South Carolina. All of them have come subject to some scrutiny from a litigation standpoint, so we want to try to avoid that at all costs. Certainly, so our, our goal here is to simply put standards into the ordinance. In chapter seven, as you, as you see here in the draft. And to provide the necessary incentives to persuade folks or entice folks to constructing affordable housing. We've identified this as a need. We know that as we continue to grow, this will be one of the disparities we seek to correct on an annual basis. With the number of homes, it is no surprise to anyone who, who lives in or around town, the home values have gone up substantially. This past year, we had a revaluation of property values here in Pittsburgh. The, the values actually went up forty-two percent. The county posted a thirty-eight percent number to account for anybody to appeal their value. I haven't heard any numbers about what the number were appealed and, and how that affected the overall growth. But countywide, we saw, we saw increases of fourteen percent and Pittsburgh in particular was forty-two percent. And then somewhat handicapped at thirty-eight. So that's substantial value increase. Further cementing the fact that we do need some more affordable housing here in town. And so what we've tried to do with staff, we've taken what the board had. And they kind of enacted a affordable housing task force a couple of years ago. And so what I've, what I've sought to do is take their, those recommendations from that board, that committee. And turn that into ordinance languages. So what you see here in your first attachment are the provisions and guidance. From that task force committee, and then you'll see where I've turned that into ordinance language. There was a few amendments in terms of some of the, the numbers that are listed there into the chart. Between the board commissioners' public hearing and then this evening, and those were all adjusted per feedback from the board of commissioners. So really with that, I, I will kind of open the floor up to the board and allow us to have a conversation about it. I won't, I won't go through each one of these individually. I trust that you've gone through them. But I'm, again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it, either on precise language or this concept.
Chris, it's Eric here. I, I, I think I might be the only member of the planning board who was on the extra elements committee. Although before he was mayor, Jim Nos was, of course, chairman of that committee, and I just wanted to compliment you. I think you did a, a really good job of accurately. Synthesizing the ordinance language out of the recommendations of the committee.
Thank you, sir. And, and Mr. Brown, I would note, based on one of those recommendations that I, I neglected to, to kind of. Introduce in my preface here is that one of the things talked about, property tax rebates. There's, there's a statute that I've listed there in your, in your staff report that prohibits us from rebating that. So I'm seeking some, some legal advice on that. Mr. Messick agrees with me that we don't really have clear guidance at the moment from the statutes to do that. I've asked a couple attorneys at school government of whether, if we enact a housing trust, if those requirements change. So what I've done is I've kind of revealed my hand with, with the comments stricken through. And so with, when it goes to actual adoption, those would be blanked and will be listed as reserved. But if ever we, we find that we have proper authority or feel that we have a legal foundation to enact those. We'll come back to you with another text amendment to insert that language back in. So you're not approving that language for, for property tax rebates. It's just there for your consideration to see what we might do in the future. So I do want to make that clear.
Carl Shaver here, Chris. I, you know, I admit I'm very ignorant on this subject. And Eric and Brian were, were very deep into it. I'm looking at the table seven point two point one, where you have it laid out in table form, which helps me a lot. I, I, I'm a little. I don't, I don't even know how to put it. Skeptical is too strong a word. When we do setbacks, building setbacks. We have a perimeter buffer width near the bottom and about in the middle, we have a sixty-five percent reduction maximum. I do understand that incentives would be very important, and I think this is a very important topic. But that lends itself to imposition on the neighbors. I don't even know how to ask the question maybe. Are these sixty-five percent and fifty percent standards, are they common? In affordable language incentive offerings, or can you, can you lend some, some insight onto those, please?
I think all of this is uncommon. So we, we are charting a new path for a lot of this. I, I don't think that very many communities have this level of incentives. Or incentives at all. And so I think what we've tried to do here is. Provide something that provides a greater yield for the property. So one of the things. Mr. Wharton, who works with, with Chatham Habitat, I've had several conversations with him and talked to him about, you know, what are your impediments? To entry when you're trying to develop something. And a lot of it is, is sheer cost, but also zoning regulations, bulk and dimensional standards in particular. And so if I, if I break down a ten-acre piece of property, rule of thumb is you're going to lose twenty percent. And your roads, your sidewalks, the things of that nature that just kind of eat into your developable land. And so what we've tried to do with this is to reduce some of those. You know, bulk and dimensional standards to allow people to get a better yield on their property and to get closer to that density. As you just heard a few moments ago with that town center tract, where you look at the overall acreage and then you look at really what's the functional density. Versus allowable density. It, it's a similar concept here of. We're looking at trying to increase the functionality of the density and not just saying, well, your growth into this, you should be fine. And so again, I think the board commissioners welcome, and our staff certainly welcomes any feedback you may have on some of these. These are intended to be minimums here. And so like it, this table in particular, I think it's important to point out. If someone qualifies for the provisions underneath the, the written sections, staff can do this without the board's further consent. If they want to deviate from these, then it has to go back to the board of commissioners for consent. So if anything here, if you say, man, Chris, I just, I'm, I'm going to have a hard time saying that fifty percent reduction on the perimeter buffer. I- is going to be sufficient because if we, if we waive the setbacks, we waive all these other things. We'd really like to protect the boundary of it and protect the adjacent property. That's all great feedback and something that I'm willing to take back to the board. So I, I won't tell you that any numbers right or wrong, it's all subjective. It's, it's us really taking a first stab at this. And as I've said at the board of commissioners' public hearing and in previous conversations. Really want to make this really a living policy. You know, we're going, if, as soon as we get this adopted, we hope that it takes off like wildfire. But if we come back a year from now and no one's used it, we know this failed in some, some measure. And so what we want to be able to do is provide a series of incentives and figure out what works well, what doesn't. And calibrate that and tweak that over time. So again, I very much welcome your feedback and if any of these numbers here give you pause. I, I'm more than welcome to note that and provide it to the board of commissioners, my report back to them.
Who, to make sure I understand, so if we have. I'm just going to make this simple math here. If we had a ten-foot setback, I'm doing minimum building setbacks. If we had a ten-foot standard setback, if they came into the sixty percent of median income category. We could reduce that sixty-five percent to make that three and a half feet. Is that the way that is read?
Yes, sir.
I guess that does give me pause. I, I fully understand the, the need to offer these incentives. I, I, I don't have an answer. I really don't. I just, those, those caught me. As, and I didn't even circle the lot, the lot width or the reduction on the lot area. But the setbacks did, did catch my eye. So while I don't have a number for you. I'm a little hesitant in something that's basically two-thirds off the top.
Sure. Mr. Shaffer, what I would say to that is, that is the, one of the tremendous advantages the planning board has, is that you don't have to know. You can simply call something out and say, I, I don't have a good pulse of, of, or, or gut feeling of what it should be. But it gives me a little bit of heartburn. And again, where the board commissioners doesn't have such a luxury, they have to say yes or no. It's relatively binary for them. The board has a tremendous advantage of being able to say, this concerns me. I can't say what a number would be. But I, I'd like to, I'd like the board commissioners to consider maybe an alternative number that, that might not be so. Drastic, if you will. So I'm happy to note that down and, and to that end, I don't, I don't need a number. I'll just mark your comment down as, as a concern.
Good, thank you.
I have an observation that I remember a presentation sometime before COVID because it was in person, it was a couple, three years ago. In which there was. In some development, someplace really where there were no setbacks, that things came to the, to the street, not to the street, but to the sidewalk. And so it was, sounds very, very strange and very odd, but I, I, I do know that's also a possibility. Can't remember the particulars, but I, I remember it because it was so blooming odd, you know, that there was in fact a possibility to have. A, a door on the sidewalk. Anyway, just, just more thinking of it.
Yeah, and, and we would, we would hope too that, like any other standard, there's some practicalness applied to it that. You know, people aren't going to put their door where, or you fall out the front door and you end up in a sidewalk.
I just mean like a street, like a store on the street. That's, that's what it was. That's, that's what it's like.
Yeah.
So. Okay, any more comments or are you ready to make a motion on the affordable housing? This is, this is simply the text amendment to allow. Incentives.
Ray, it's Eric. I'll move to approve.
Been moved in by Eric and seconded by Frieda to. Discussion.
Mr. Bland, if I may. To Mr. Brown and with the motion and Ms. Austin with your second, does that, does your motion to recommend include the consistency statement as well?
Yes, that's correct. We need to do it in two parts. I move, first of all, that we approve this from the standpoint of the. The, the town's. Let's see, how, how do I correctly phrase this?
You could just read it there on the agenda if you want.
Oh, all right. You know, I didn't print that agenda out, right? So I'll let you, I'll let you.
Let me read it for you.
Yeah, I'm printing.
The motion is to approve the text amendment for ZTA twenty twenty-one dash oh five. To unify the development ordinance and adopt the town Pittsburgh Planning Board Land Use Plan Consistency Statement for Approval. That, is that right?
That's what I meant to say. Thank you.
And I will second that again.
And it's seconded again, and now we have discussion.
Carl here, is the motion with reference to attachment one or attachment two or both?
Just attachment two of the memo. Attachment one is just there for your better understanding of. The, if I understand your question, question correctly, within the memo, attachment one is there just to give you some precursor information. And context for what the affordable housing task force proposed to the board of commissioners. And then attachment two is the actual proposed language that we intend to include into the UDO. And then ultimately then the consistency statement that supports attachment two's language.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And then does that mean we are adopting these setbacks and these percentages as they are written today?
If if Mr. Braun and and Ms. Allison are okay. I'm I'm going to say it's it's adopted with the comment purported by the. Planning board as well, that the percentages listed in table seven point two point one may to be considered with greater scrutiny. Because they may be be excessive and and I'm don't want to put words in your mouth. But basically, just a further overview of of the percentages to see if those work or not for them.
No, that's that's fine. I I mean, I I agree to that. And ultimately, the town board is going to have to make that decision.
Right, I agree.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed. Hearing none opposed, declare that it passes five to zero. So. I think now the next item is affordable housing, which I presume Mr. Kennedy would. Gracious with his presentation, which is to. To make a motion, actually, the the request is to move to approve the affordable housing plan, I take it.
Yes, sir. It's on there if you so choose to do so, like anything else, we're we're not gonna. We're not gonna coerce you or force you to do anything you don't want to do. This one, and I do appreciate the board's willingness to allow me to to throw, as well as my staff. To throw on an item at kind of the last second. We were working through some of the particulars about how to proceed forward with this element. Chatham Park submitted this element. This is their final additional element that's required with the master plan development P D D. That was approved in twenty fifteen. With that approval, Chatham Park has agreed to submit twelve additional elements. All of them have been adopted except for this final one, which is affordable housing. As you have seen in 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 your packet, if you've had a chance to review that. That all those were submitted in in twenty seventeen, they were submitted in three tranches. Each one with four in in those. And so this was part of trunks three. And so three of the four were adopted, this one never was. There was some consternation over the language within this. And so staff over time has has worked with Chatham Park. Certainly, we've kind of reinvigorate this effort. The town's focus and its own affordable housing components that we just discussed have been a part of that. And and the one thing that I would, I would make again clear with this is that this is different than what we just discussed. Because these are. Not incentives, these, these are mandates that come before Chatham Park as part of their development. And so as part of the P D D, they've committed to affordable housing. What they've included in here is a number of 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 up to five percent of their total units. Now, one quick note on that, it's a note, it's five percent of the platted lots. So as as has been much discussed, we've looked at the Chatham Park development having twenty two thousand homes or residential units. So within that, they're committing right now with this proposed language five percent. So it's basically a not to exceed eleven hundred units. Or a minimum of eleven hundred units, it might be a better way to put that. And so, but that's if they plat all twenty two thousand homes. While it's probably intended to be that, I think it'll probably be somewhat less than twenty two thousand at the end of the day. Other types of development barriers enter into the mix and it'll probably be fewer than twenty two thousand. But let's presume we go to that full bill out number, that's what they're proposing with this. There's a number of provisions in here that the town is obviously interested in. One, it's it brings actual units to us, and I think that's a really exciting thing. The number of units is is far and above pretty much any project you'll see in the state. And so I think there's a lot of exciting components with it. One of the things at staff level that's that's embedded in here, we it's included in section nine on on page five of of their. Numbers here, it's within, it's not page five of the packet, it's page five of their actual element. Section nine is really where the town gets involved with their their items, talks about the development of a housing trust. Certainly, we don't have a housing trust today, so we'd have to develop one of those. This language here commits us to developing one within one year. If we don't develop one within three years, it kind of puts a a pause on all of their requirements. Now, they can still contribute, they can still do land donations or construction, all those things that credit towards that. But they're not required to until we adopt that. So that's one thing that that we have to be cognizant of at staff level. There's also a requirement in here, the town will take two percent, two and a half percent of their ad valorem revenue. From Chatham Park and put it into a how affordable housing trust. So that's, that would be a tremendous amount of money at some point. Today, it's it's a little bit amount of money. It's bits, you know, more than most will put into affordable housing. The town this past year, we put in equivalent to one penny. And so what we've done there is, that's about seventy six thousand dollars for us. So we put that in there, we we intend to commit to that. Chatham Park will be one of our largest contributors to tax base. So we're committing with some of that tax base of of growth into affordable housing as part of this element. The language you see here in front of you has been discussed with our board. Over time, there's been a lot of conversations that have occurred trying to refine this. So I know Chuck Smith with Preston Developments on the call this evening. I will allow him to kind of go through the ins and outs and present this to you. And so as I put in my email over the weekend. The purpose of this evening, if you feel comfortable and say, hey, great, we'd we'd love to see this moving forward, we'd love, we we support this. I don't think anybody would argue with you of making that recommendation. But we're, I'm also cognizant of a couple of days review may not be sufficient. So what we wanted to have this evening is a presentation, let's get the ball rolling with this. After that presentation from Mr. Smith, we'll see where we are at. And then determine what the next steps are. You do have a consistency statement for you. It's functionally that very similar to one you just adopted for the other affordable housing that the town's doing. Insofar as that, you know, we we want a diversity of housing types, we want to promote the economic development growth there. We want to have a place for everyone to have a place to live in Pittsburgh. So this this serves that same purpose from a land use consistency statement. So. With that, I'll entertain any questions from the board for me currently. If not, I'll ask Mr. Smith to. To to turn on and and provide the presentation to the board.
I have a question at this point, if I may. And that is just a clarifying issue here. I'd like to know, and I'm beginning to perceive this a little differently. Is this affordable housing document that we have here from Chatham Park additional element affordable housing? Is that document something that you, the town of Pittsburgh, and it's rep, you being the representative of the town? And and Chuck Smith being representative of Chad Park, is this something that you both. Approve of, agree to, and and think is appropriate? Is that? I'd like to know that before I hear this. I'm beginning to think that this, you're saying that this is what you and Chatham Park representative have have come to hash out and. And accept, is that true?
I I would say it goes beyond me. I I think this is a culmination of years of work. As you've seen.
I'm aware, I'm aware of all the committee, all the years of work. I I perhaps I'm misunderstood, misrepresenting. I just want to, is this a document that we have all agreed upon then at this point?
I I think that's a fair statement to say at this point. I think we're at the point of saying. This document is is in a form where we feel comfortable at the staff level, taking this to the board. I I don't feel like we're wasting your time by presenting this, if if that makes sense.
It makes good sense. I'm I'm glad to hear that. That 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 makes me feel better that. I I'm very much of a committee person, and I want to be sure that a lot of people have looked at this. And have studied it carefully and have thought about it. And I know some of them, I was a good friend of Bron's even. Brian Taylor, who's not with us. So I'm delighted to know that. And I simply wanted to be aware of what I was looking at before I heard it, because I've already read it pretty well. As much as I could, well, I only had a full time with it. So, so thank you. I'm looking forward to hearing from Chuck now. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, and Mr. Blaine, I would say that's a great kind of foundational context question to ask. I I appreciate you asking that.
Sure. Chuck, are you here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And let me just add, feed on to what you just said, Mr. Bland. There there, we originally submitted an element. Five years ago. And I think it had a public hearing about about four years ago, but there since then. And Mr. Bronze included in this, there have been a number of people that have had. Input and have participated in the process of review and discussion. Tim Smith and I were both on the affordable housing task force that the mayor set up. And then also the current mayor Nass was the chair of that task force. And deserves a lot of credit for the for the movement and where this is today. So I think, you know, based on not only what the task force. That we went through conversations for a year and a half. And listened to experts, listened to a lot of public input. We've also since then had a lot of conversations with current town board members, some were on that task force, some were not. So I think we're we're getting closer. So what I, if I could share my screen. And. Can you, can you see my screen?
I don't think so yet.
I think I think Kelly has to relinquish.
Should be okay to now.
Okay, let me. How about that? Okay, let me just, I'm not going to read the document and go through all the detail. Mr. Kennedy did a did a good job of introducing this, but I wanted to. Go through some of the premises that we've been working under over the last few years. For those who haven't, as Mr. Schaefer says, he hadn't intimately been involved in this process like others have, and I don't expect you to have read it since you got it Saturday. So. I just wanted to go through some of the the base, the the basic precepts that we were working under. So. First of all, Chatham Park is committed to providing, and we've always said this, provide a diverse mix of housing. Including what would be considered affordable and workforce housing. This element addresses our response, affordable housing responsibilities. But its intent is not to also solve any town or county housing problem that may already exist. Where the purpose of this is to mitigate impacts that we would have on this region. This element is to work in concert with the town's proposed affordable housing ordinance that you just considered. And we've been working under some definitions for affordable and workforce housing that are that are HUD definitions. It's the definitions the task force was using, and I just want to make those clear so everybody understands when we're talking affordable or talking workforce, what we mean. But affordable housing is housing for which monthly rent or mortgage payment. Plus monthly cost of water, sewer and electric utilities does not exceed. Thirty percent of eighty percent of the annual median family income divided by twelve. So using. The current median family income for this metro area of eighty six thousand four hundred dollars, that would be a monthly. Expenditure on housing of seventeen hundred and twenty eight dollars. For workforce housing, it would include the same things, but it's it does not exceed thirty percent of a hundred and twenty percent. Of annual median family income divided by twelve and using that same eighty six thousand four hundred. Dollar median family income, you get twenty five hundred ninety two dollars a month. So those are, that's the HUD definition, and that's what. We're working under. As we have developed this. And then finally, I think, you know, we've said this over and over, but just to reiterate, we do not, we don't build houses. You know, so we don't, you know, sell a house and the money comes to us and we. Qualify people for living in that house or living in that apartment. But what we what we will do here is cause to be built affordable and or workforce housing units. And so then the basics that when you get into reading and absorbing. The the narrative of the element, this, this, this is the basics. As Mr. Kennedy said. We're proposing that five percent of our housing. Or a land donation equivalent would meet this affordable or workforce definition that I just. Quoted. Secondly, the premise here is, and this again, has been from feedback from both the task force and from board members that. This housing would be made up of approximately ninety percent multifamily or apartment units and ten percent single family. Detached or town home units. This requirement could be met by the provision of for sale rental or subsidized rental dwelling units. The donation of land or a combination of land and units. A minimum of forty percent of these required units. Would be affordable. So forty percent of the single family units, forty percent of the multifamily units. Would be considered affordable and meet that definition that we stated earlier. Six. Chris talked about this also, and this was something, a concept that the board, the task force came up with, excuse me. And when we were originally talking about this, we understood that there were some requirements or some restrictions that the town may have. In dealing with this sort of notion. And again, the task force, you you know, the, it seemed like the the mantra was, you know, if if we can get one more affordable unit on the ground, that's better than. Zero. If we can get two, it's better than one. So anything we could do that maybe a little bit. Out of the box with the thinking, we were trying to come up with these with these sorts of ideas. And one of those would be creating this nonprofit housing trust. And when we were talking about it, we were talking about it being something that was at arm's length from the town. It wasn't technically a town body. And which, whether it's a five oh one C three or something that may then make it a little less restrictive than some of the. Concerns that Mr. Kennedy brought up from a, that he's heard from the League of Municipalities and different. Different other experts weighing in on what happens if the town is trying to deal with incentives. So we've got this concept of creating this housing trust, and the purpose of that group. Is to administer and support and incentivize affordable rent subsidies and developing affording affordable dwelling units. This group would also manage or cause to be managed this housing stock. As Mr. Kennedy has been very clear to us that there there is no staff that he currently has that really could do something like this. So. Taking the time to create this is going to be an important part of this of this plan. And then he also mentioned that we're we're proposing to that two and two point five percent of. The ad valorem taxes that the town receives from the creation of Chatham Park properties. Would then be allocated for a period of thirty years for these affordable or workforce rent subsidies. Or other affordable workforce housing costs within Chatham Park. There's no restriction that, I mean, they may say we're going to take two and a half percent of all. Of our funds and apply the rest of it to the rest of Pittsburgh, but this, what from the properties that we are. Developing within Chatham Park, that that money would go towards the cost of creating and. Facilitating the creation of affordable housing in Chatham Park. These requirements could be also be met on land that we own within one mile of Chatham Park. And some of the reasoning for this is when you get into. Truly affordable. Applications, they they have standards in there like wanting to be within a mile of a grocery store, certain distance of a grocery store, certain distance of transit. And that just opens the door to to other properties we have that we know would be within. Within that proximity of a grocery store in particular, because we don't have necessarily that a guarantee of further grocery stores or meeting. Some of those other requirements yet beyond what we know today. And this gets into some of, this ties into the 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 town's proposed ordinance. That that you just considered, but that each of the Chatham Park. Affordable and workforce units is exempt from the payment of applicable town fees and recreation land dedication requirements. And Mr. Kennedy didn't say this, he sort of talked about it with his. Conversation with Jerry. But twenty five percent of all housing costs is due to governmental regulation. So anything, any way you can figure to to reduce. So anything, any way you can figure to to reduce fees or requirements. Mr. Schaefer was getting into just the point of, you know, we aren't trying to propose reduced setbacks, I don't think with what we're we're doing, but. Any way that you can sort of chip away at that twenty five percent of the cost of a house because of of regulation, that's. Enables you to to come closer to reaching that goal of providing affordable units. And then this. Mr. Kenny, I can't remember if this was if this is in yours or not, I know the the task force had recommended that. Whenever someone was going to be providing an affordable dwelling unit, that you would be granted an additional dwelling unit in your zoned area, so that's consistent with that recommendation. And then finally, we feel like, again, because we've heard the county talk a lot, and they've got a task force that that deals with affordable housing. We think that this lift should be equally distributed around the county. Because county residents are going to benefit from this, but county incentives should be also be available in the town. We're asking that the town work with the county. To look at what incentives could be provided, for example, not assigning the three thousand dollar school fee to these affordable units. A percentage of of the county taxes, the county gets about two thirds of what six fifty six cents, town gets forty four cents out of every dollar. We're asking that they be. They be in this conversation to look at what, how can they contribute, not only to to what we're doing, but what would be occurring across the county and and the and other parts of Pittsburgh. So. That's the basics of what we propose. And I mean, we're available to to answer questions, but I realize that many of you have not had the opportunity to look at this since Saturday.
Thanks. Anymore? Kennedy, do you have anything else to add?
I I don't believe so, sir. The one thing I would note is that the. This element was submitted to the town on September ninth. And if I had had a better foresight, I would afford it to the planning board at the same time I afforded to the Board of Commissioners. So the the Board of Commissioners has had this for a few weeks. We also intend to bring this item before the Board of Commissioners. Again, I don't anticipate them to to adopt anything until the planning board has made a recommendation. But we're intended to have a very similar conversation to this on Monday night, the eleventh. With the Board of Commissioners, again, just to. Make sure we keep the momentum going, the dialogue, it's obviously gone stale after a few years, and this is really important to the town. It's it's been much discussed. With a lot of criticism of why we don't have something in place for an element. And I think it's it's a really. Advantageous time to sync up both the towns, I'll say macro policy for incentives. As well as what Chatham Park's doing and to really kind of have. Both the both of those entities, both parties saying. We want affordable housing in Pittsburgh. And then anybody who comes to Pittsburgh knows that Pittsburgh wants wants this and desires to have more affordable housing, and so. If someone comes in and goes, why would I do it? You know, Chatham Park's not even doing it. We say, as a matter of fact, they are doing it, and they've committed to it without some of the necessarily all the incentives that others may be subject to, so. I think that's going to be a really important. Foundation and kind of posturing point for the town to leverage increased affordable housing, so. Again, I understand the planning board may not feel comfortable to to move forward with what's proposed. But I think as we kind of started with Mr. Bands, Mr. Blaine's prompt of. I do think that the Board of Commissioners, those who have been helping tweak this language and those who've been involved in the process. Are generally comfortable. I mean, certainly, there are some, just like with the previous one and Mr. Schaefer's comments, there's probably some. I'll borrow a term Mr. Bonnet's had at the last meeting, some some conversation about the integers, the numbers themselves within it. But I think the overall policy, the framework in which those numbers are situated. I think is is consistent with what the town is looking for. So again, we welcome any feedback that the planning board has. Be they own numbers, be they own. Types of units, other types of policy language, and just again, in your role as providing that guidance of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. You know, it means a lot to me that 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 all parties involved seem to have come to some terms with this. This is not, you know, I I don't think we've been rushing into this at all, it's been going on for years and years. Well over five years, so I don't, I'm prepared to go ahead with it, I don't mind. I don't want anyone else to be to feel rushed or pressed. I simply don't think it's a rush depressed job, I think it's been going for an awful long time. Lots here from other members of the board. I'm I'm just delighted to to think that Chatham Park and the town and all the committees and other parties have come together with. A starting point, it's always a starting point. I don't, there's there's nothing that. Can't be improved on. So. What's the pleasure of the board? What do you think?
I agree with you, Ray. I agree with it. This has been for a long time coming, so I think I'm ready. To. To go ahead on with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Frida. Comments and thoughts from. All your.
I see that. I'm going to abstain, I'm going to abstain from voting because I did not see any of it. I was out all day for about ten hours, but. The fact that we're getting somewhere from nowhere is a positive thing. So to follow in your comment, Ray, you know, the details, if the details need to be tweaked and ironed out as we move forward, so be it. So. While I will not vote, I'm generally, I'm very much in support of of the concept.
I would like to ask you, Carl, do you mind if we go ahead and vote? I want to know how you feel.
No, no.
How do the others feel? Mr. Kearney, Mr. Braun, let me know what you think.
Ray, I'm I'm fine with voting. I mean, I've I've been. Part of this from the very beginning and sat for hours and hours with. Mr. Smith and my fellow panelists going over the details of this, and I think it puts the township in a nice position of. Showing some leadership to the county officials and. You know, setting a at least a threshold for development elsewhere in the in the county as to. What might be made part of new developments.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a great move in. In that hopeful direction. Is any member here prepared to to make a motion in light of our discussion?
I make a motion that we accept that we approve affordable housing. I don't have my paper with me.
I'll read it for you. Ms. Austin's motion was to recommend approve. To approve the Affordable Housing Plan Additional Element. And adopt the town Pittsburgh Planning Board Land Use Plan Consistency Statement for Approval. That is correct. Statement that's in the additional element approval and consistency statement approval, that's I read the motion, that's it.
Yes.
Is there? And Eric has seconded. Any more discussion? Then let's move to a vote. All in favor, please. All all those opposed. I'm hearing a lot of ambient noise here. I heard eyes, now all those opposed, any opposed? And I hear. One, two, three, four eyes and none opposed. So the motion carries and the additional element is approved. I think that is good, yes.
I just wanted to thank you for your consideration and the board's consideration, and this is, this is a pretty important. Matter for us. And we're pretty proud of this, actually, and we're we're thankful that that you agree to the level that we have tonight.
Well, I think it's a genuine feeling that that it's time for us to proceed in a. A polite forthcoming situation, so the the motion is going to read five to zero. That's how extensions work, by the way, so. Thank you all for that, and we're going to go to the. The planning department reports, and then we're going to go to a comment period, so Teresa, will you. In your succinct and delicate way, proceed with these remainder of this.
Yes, sir. And I've been wanting to tell you I love your background.
Right, it makes me feel better, and besides, I don't, I don't have to worry about where I am, you know. It's messy around here.
I I want to figure out how to do that. I have lots of ideas myself. But. The only thing I have is at the next board meeting, we will probably have two preliminary plots. Both of these developments have had some setbacks, so I I'm thinking we're we're ready for them to move forward. So the first one will be Corbett Landing, which was known as Rexford Landing off of Old Graham Road. They received initial zoning approval several months ago. And then Flynn Farms off of sixty four Business West. They're they're getting close to being ready to come to the board for preliminary plot approval as well. And I knew that I wasn't, I wouldn't be able to do it tonight, just because we had such a long agenda, but. I plan on giving the board an update on our U D O parking lot list. And just kind of letting you know where we are and what's to be expected with our new next quarterly update. That's everything. Yes, sir.
So that's our planning department reports. Let's let's proceed to our. Board comment period, and I see first, Mr. Kearney. Anything, sir? Besides your concern about the traffic, I know that was profound. You're muted, so please get, I want to know what you're talking about. Pardon?
There you go. All right, I I got a different issue, and I didn't bring it up tonight because I I'm not a hundred percent sure how this should have been brought up. And I think it should have been brought up by the the Board of Supervisors. On the property, the Townsend Track. There is a historic cemetery on that track that didn't show up in any of the information or anything. Plus, that particular piece of property. There's been some town founders and early people in our. Town history that owned that property, and there's a whole bunch of different things coming in. We need to have something that. Where the Historical Society from Chatham County can provide us with information. So we don't destroy some of our town's history. I mean, that's one of the reasons I moved here, I just love this town and the history of the town. So there's a cemetery, I wrote down the name of the person. You know, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it was one of the town, early town members, there was a small cemetery there.
Well, I'll check with the historical people soon, as soon as I can find some.
All the information on it because they've been contacting me because they found out I'm on the planning board. And I'm and I'm one of the board members on the Historical Association.
Okay, good.
So I I know this information, and it's it's going to be common, I sent a copy of the letter to Teresa today.
Then you know Beverly Wiggins is a good person to speak with about that.
She's the one that's called me.
Okay, good.
Out of conversation with, but the point being is. I don't know how they're going to handle that on the town, the Townsend Track with that cemetery, I don't even know if they know it was available until today. So if Teresa's still listening, if you could have that young lady give me a call like we discussed earlier, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, but I didn't want to bring it up in the meeting after they were saying about, you know, we can't do this and that and so on, so.
And Mr. Kearney, if I may add, I would say one of the things the town does have the ability. If you're with the, you know, being a planning board member, e- even if you're not, like a stakeholder committee, like in a historical association. Our website does have the ability where you can sign up for alerts. We also try to push out a sunshine list through our town clerk. So i- if you're on a some sort of committee like this, historical association, you can get updates to know when things are submitted. What we want to try to do a better job of is alert people about products that are in the queue and not just when they come out for a public hearing. I know there were some efforts in the past with that. The website, I think, is dramatically improved, we're still working on the content, but visually, it's it's improved. And we want to be able to provide people the opportunity to see what's in the queue to go, oh, I know where that property is, I'm aware of this, and I'm not sure of people who are buying the property, you know, have walked the property or. You know, cemeteries in particular can be somewhat inconspicuous, especially the older ones. And so again, I I think we we welcome that feedback, and obviously, the the earlier in the game, the better, and I think that's kind of where you're getting at with. Didn't we want to bring it up tonight, kind of with with where we were in the in the process, but again, it's still a valid comment.
I'm working with Teresa, and we're going to have a meeting with her in reference to how the information can get to the Historical Society. So that they can check out to see what's on there historically. And it's just in preliminary stages right now, but hopefully, we can get that going shortly and then. Put our feedback to it because it's a beautiful town, I just love the history, it goes back into the.
Yeah, and Mr. Mr. Blaine, Mr. Messick has his hand raised.
I see him there, I was just about to chat him, okay.
He's going to tell us everything we just said was wrong.
No, not completely, but but cemeteries are protected as a matter of law. I mean, if there's a subdivision, it will, it will show the cemetery and the and the rights of people who are. Family members who are buried on a piece of property or have will have access to it, and. So it's it's not a question of being ignored, and and any surveyor who prepares a subdivision plan. You know, when they see a cemetery, they have to, they have to delineate it, so it it's not something that will be ignored as you get to more. You know, more specific plans and development.
But excuse me, sir, but I didn't see anything on the plans or what we looked at tonight.
Well, you haven't seen any subdivision plans either, so that that's, it would not be delineated on a site plan for a special use permit. It would be on an individual subdivision.
Alrighty, thank you.
Eric, I see you next.
Ray, thank you.
Thank you. And then I see Carl over there in the corner. That's what my screen is.
Same old broken record stuff, Chatham Park signs. Not as pervasive as they once were, but they're they're still around, the little. Real estate size directional signs pointing. People to the. I'm not sure what they're pointing them to, I guess the houses that are for sale. They're on my street, I know for sure.
Good, thanks. Rita?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Well, I think I've said, all I need to say too is everybody agreed to adjourn now.
Mr. Blaine, can I can I add one?
Oh, we have some upcoming events, sorry, oh, I was going to forget something. Yeah, go ahead.
I I do want to kind of brief the board, if you if you, whether you follow the Board of Commissioners' agenda at the last meeting, we did adopt some amendments to our noise ordinance. So I know the planning board discussed that extensively on some previous items, so Chief Johnson, our police chief. He and I worked together and on on some language and shorty kind of put it into form for us. And so we've adopted some amendments to our Code of Ordinance, it's chapter seventeen, as well as some amendments, chapter sixteen, that allows us to, we hope more effectively enforce. Basically, the loud mufflers and jake brakes, and so we've adopted our ordinance, and again, hopefully, we'll seek some better compliance. It is difficult to to be present to see those things, but again, we were, we've we've modified the language and hopefully is a more effective manner. We strive to be perfect, we probably won't get there. But we did, I did want to share that to this board while I was here tonight to know that we did hear those concerns, and we tried to address that.
Great, thank you very much. On the upcoming events, of course, are the Commissioners' meetings, which October eleventh and twenty fifth and the first. Look at that, the first is our next planning board meeting. And that's that's that. I think we've covered everything unless there's something else, anyone got anything else at all? And that's, that's it. I think we've covered everything unless there's something else. Anyone got anything else at all?
No, sir, I'll, uh, I'll move to adjourn.
I will second that.
Thank you, those in favor, should be adjourning, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? The eyes have your adjourn.
Night all.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Frida. Bye, Victoria. Bye, Teresa. Whoever's left.